Day nineteen and day twenty to make up for me being gone this weekend. So um we're gonna start off today uh right now of course go for about an hour. And then maybe by eight twenty eight thirty or so we'll come back for study stream session number two. So we'll get some hand reading practice looking at our opponents range. Then we'll post this hand whatever hand it is that we review. We'll post this hand in the red chip poker forum uh to get some responses from some people. Um I don't know what the hand's going to be but whatever it is we'll figure out some kind of a question to ask to get responses. Um because one of the great things, one of the great ways to study is by asking your friends. What they think about hands and also asking strangers, people that don't even know you. Eventually, once you get into a forum or spend a lot of time in a forum like the red chip poker forum. Um the guys there are pretty cool. I haven't spent much time. I just know. Uh for the fact that you know it's split suits forum Zach Shaw is over there too. Um along with some other really good coaches and guys that uh uh you know that they do a good job basically. And they're not gonna allow people in the forums that that are rude and and uh you know. That are caustic to the environment, you know, they're not gonna do that. So it's they're very good forums altogether. So we're gonna post over there as opposed to some other forums. And then after that we'll review some game tape that are recorded the other day. And I posted the game tape up on YouTube and I will give you a link to that uh in today's email. Excuse me in today's email so that you can watch it later on if you choose. I don't know if we'll get through the full game tape. It's a little over thirty minutes and um you know as we're watching it here I'll pause and discuss things make notes and stuff. So I don't know if we'll get through the full thirty minutes of the game tape. So let's see here. Let me share this. Via Twitter. And the Facebooks. Cool beans alright, so we are ready to go. So hand reading practice, our opponent's range. So like normal um you know you this is this year stats I'm over ten thousand hands now I played some hands last night which was nice. Negative sixty dollars um almost negative three buy-ins but that's alright. If we look at actually uh twenty-five NL full ring. I'm at fifty-five dollars up this year so just about even in twenty-five NL total. Um but of course this separates the two uh that tie or game types um you know. See some hands that went to showdown here. Some stuff that we have not gone through yet. I think we did the queen's hand. We did the ace king flush. Did we do queens? Pocket kings. Ace ten off ace king suited pocket kings. Well, maybe we didn't do that queen's hand. Let's take a look at the action here. Raise call 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 check on the river. Oh, this might be a good one to with a check on the river maybe asking the forums if we should uh. If we should have bet that. Cool. Let's take a look at this if we can't arrange our opponent. So uh six max table but only three people at it. We raise so. Shadow X seven is an eighteen eleven player tight aggressive three bet over two hundred and thirty-eight hands is only two percent. Three bet four point three and five. Yeah, it looks like mostly a value three better right here. So I guess we could be up against aces and kings for sure. Um also against queens, jacks, tens, even nines, ace, king suited, ace, king off, maybe even ace, queen suited. Uh king, queen suited possibly as well so uh a small. A small blind range of four percent. Yeah. There's some decent cards and maybe a few that are that are semi bluff kinda like the king, queen and the ace, queen that kinda stuff. Um not necessarily for value in that range. So what do we do? We just call here. You guys have seen this before. This is from uh splitsu.com slash templates. This is the hand reading template that I use to uh. Uh to help me record the hand and record the progress of the hand. What date is this for eight? My notes here. Button open. Did we call or do we four bet? We just call. Okay. Button open call versus. So we shall start by giving them a rather narrow range here. Start with this range um. I just don't know much about the player. They three bet from the small blind. I have a. Two hundred and thirty-eight hands on them. They have the same on me. They probably see me as a tight aggressive player. Um I'm and willing possibly willing to fold a lot. It is slightly bigger than a three X. Three X would be two twenty-five. They made it two fifty. So they could be trying to bet a little bit more to get us to fold. Um possibly. So let's up this a little bit. Maybe not king, queen off, maybe not ace, jack off suit. I think often calling with those. Let's add nines to the mix. Um. I don't wanna add just random three bet bluffing. I mean I could add hands that I three best semi bluff with. But I don't wanna do that. I just don't know what they're capable of. In this instance. Do I have any notes shadow? I don't wanna see that actually because it might tell me what hand they have. Hello. Alright, yep, we got some notes here. Yeah. So they said uh now you said it's a high sky such a hard spot with queen, queen. I think that's a joke. Easy get stacked here. Um yep. Not really a joke. I mean it's it's an easy spot to open but then to decide to four bet. That's the hard spot. So I agree. Yep. Hard decision to four bet. But can't fold for sure cannot fold here. Um yeah, without a doubt gonna call. I mean cuz you could see that there's so much there in the range. We have uh diamond heart. Uh we've easily got you know we've got this range crust right here. There's three different pocket pairs that we beat. One that we chop and all these other non pairs we currently beat. So um I'm definitely down with uh with playing this. I cannot fold here for sure. Uh pocket deuces threes fours fives. Yeah, totally fold. You know unless I wanna set mine for a full uh two. Two point three five BBs you know two point three three BBs wouldn't wanna do that. So got a call here. See a flop. See what happens. Do seven nine. It's lovely backdoor flush draw over pair. Uh let's see we put we just put pocket nine. So there's only one set in the range. We still beat a wide. Uh a wide uh part of their range pre flop. So uh do seven nine heart diamond heart. Awesome. So on that board right there. Yeah, we improved in equity sixty-three percent. But they are out of position first to act as the pre flop three better. Let's see what they do. Oh whoops before we get there. Starting range. It's a really narrow range. I'm starting at just fifty-eight combos. Um. Five point seven three is the uh percentage. Very narrow range right there for sure. Um yeah, I'm good with at least starting at that. You know, I mean there are some some hands even though. Uh they're an unknown relatively unknown. They could have some bluffing stuff semi bluffing and just trying to get us to fold our ace, king and ace, queen. So we'll see what happens. So on the do seven nine what happens? Do they check to us cuz we're in position? No, it's two eighty little over half pot. So it could be going for value. So before we see our play, um what do we make of just the bet right here? Well. Sets are betting which is only one set pocket nines. Yep. Over pairs totally betting. Top pairs. Oh, they don't have any ace highs now. I think ace highs we see a C bet at sixty and then it drops to thirty-three percent on the turn. So very turn honest, not so honest when it comes to making C bets on the flop. And it is a three bet pot. It's worth fighting for for sure. So I'm going to assume they are betting uh their ace highs. No made hand. Oh, the king, queen. Might as well put that in too. I don't see why they wouldn't bet, you know. So that's a hundred percent of their range right here. Uh because it's a three bet pot, they're a tight aggressive player. I think and this flop really doesn't hit. Let you know I just called pre flop. So he can put me on ace, king through ace, ten suited. Um uh pocket threes, fours, fives, sixes, eights, even pocket tens that might fold to a decent sized bet like this. I mean he could put me on hands like that. So he could be betting with a hundred percent of his range just to push us off. And then maybe he'll reassess on the turn if we get uh if we call and if we re raise if he's bluffing he'll just fold at this point. So um yeah, so I'm saying he's doing this with one hundred percent of his range. There's no change there. And I just call and I think I probably called because um I have position. I can control the pot. I do not know yet if he has an ace or a king or a knight, if he has aces or kings. And so this call right or this. This call right here is if I would raise, I'm really only getting called by a set of nines, I think, or aces or kings. I I really think so. So I'm only getting called by hands that beat me. It's possible I could get value from Jackson tens, but that's only two hands or you know, yeah, two different hands. Um twelve combos total. So I'm thinking at this point a call is best just to continue to get value. He might decide to bluff another street with ace, king with king, queen with ace, jack. Um ace, queen as well. I don't think I have ace, jack in his range. Oh, I do. Ace, jack suited. Yeah, so there's a few hands that he could continue to bomb and I could just get value from. Yeah, I'm not necessarily worried about a flush draw. I mean he has only three percent of the time he has a flush draw, one out of thirty-three times. You know, I don't have to be worried about the flush draw. I got a little blocker to it as well. Um yeah, so I think I'm calling here because if I raise, everything else is folding. Everything I beat is folding. Most everything. Three of spades comes. Oh, before we get there. Um our equity on this flop is sixty-three percent. Oh, that's right. This one doesn't give you the. Gets the same. One hundred percent and fifty-eight combos. So then they bet and then we call. So they have a hundred percent of their pre flop range in. Uh the turn comes the three of spaderinos. So what happens here? Oh, well, before before that, um our equity is a little bit higher at sixty-seven percent. Great. So things are looking good. The three does not help at all. Doesn't complete a flush. Doesn't make anything in their hand. So uh it's a complete. Non-entity seven twenty-three. So first two eighty. Fifty-three percent bet. Seven twenty-three. Sixty-six percent bet. Yeah, so they up their bet sizing on the three. So obviously the three doesn't help us unless we were. I guess unless we stayed in with ace, three suited of hearts. But then it's just a bottom pair. Why would we call on just a bottom pair unless we still wanna chase our flush draw? And then you know we wouldn't be in still. We wouldn't be in with ace, three suited hearts. Well, we would, but that doesn't really help us. We could fold. And if we had pocket threes, we should have folded pre flop and we should have folded on the flop. So he can't put that in our ranges as well. So that three is a whiff for us and it's a whiff for him. So his C bet here. Um now now that he's double barrelled and he's more turn honest, I am definitely gonna say this is closer to value. There could be some bluffs in maybe some some semi bluffs with a flush draw that kind of a thing. Maybe even just two overs with ace, king, but not ace, queen cuz he is um he is out of position. He could be checking to us right here and uh to see what we do. So sets are definitely bombing which is only one set. Uh no two pair over pair I think are betting again uh all the way. The tens all the way through aces. They're all betting. Now ace highs I think are gonna slow down right here. Um. Do I wanna keep ace, king in? Well, we'll keep we'll keep the flush draws in for sure. So ace, king, ace, queen, ace, jack. We'll keep those in his range, but just an ace high. We'll take out of his range at least for this and he he even upped it. Oftentimes if people are double barrel bluffing, they will keep the bet sizing the same. So roughly fifty-three percent in this instance. Or drop it a little bit to an even fifty percent. He upped it. He's he's thinking he's going for value and trying to charge us if if we have like two over cards to. Let's say he has tens. Tens or jacks is my guess is what he has right here. So if he has tens or jacks, he's trying to get us to fold our ace, king, our ace, queen and our suited uh flush draws. Uh so no ace, high, no made hand. Flush draws I think can barrel this for sure. Uh oh, no ace, queen cuz we have the queen. No flush draw, no open. Oh, there's no open enter. Yeah, that's it right there. So he's double barreling on a much smaller range fifty-one point seven percent. Thirty combos. I'm not sure if you can see this in the stream, but I said uh he's his barrel sizing increased more likely for value with over pairs is what I put there. And just pasted his range in. Yeah, so he's uh he's effectively with this bet that he's made. In my opinion, he's limited or he's uh yeah, he's. Um. He's narrowed his range with this bet sizing, but it's a stronger range now cuz as you can see now our equity with. With this new with this new range whoops let's put that in um with this new range we have forty-seven percent. So our equity dropped from fifty uh from sixty-seven to forty-seven percent because of his bet sizing because we narrowed it. We do beat some of these hands, the uh tens and jacks and all of these uh flush draws and stuff. Oh, only those two combos of flush draws. Yeah, we beat them currently, but uh we're not super. We're not super ahead of his range anymore. Uh the deuce of clubs comes. Let's see what that does to equities. It's basically a nothing. I mean it makes him a full house if he had a set of nines, but that's it. Now everyone has two pair whether it's me or him if I if he has a tens or jacks, which is what I I suspect him to have. So what happens here? He just checks. Okay, totally. So when he checks, I could still put him on over pairs um. Checking the ace high. Yeah. Cuz he missed his flush draw for sure. Um. Now his over pairs. What over pairs are he just checking here? So we wanna think about. We wanna take out the hands. He's definitely betting. I would say he's betting aces and kings. Queens could check and then call the bet for sure. Um it's possible that he's just checking those as well. And then planning on calling because the board didn't help him at all. He got two streets of value already. But um let's say that these are in his checking range right here, tens through queens. Uh what else is in his checking range? Full houses are not in his checking range right there. Great. So at this point, we're saying these fifteen hands are in his range. We have ninety-seven percent equity versus him. We basically only chop if he has pocket queens that he's checking right here. Um so at this point, I would say because he checked the river, he doesn't have a made hand. Or he doesn't have a great hand. So we should be betting with our. With our nut with our near nuts hand, I should say. Um yeah. So on the river. With his check. It's a very narrow, very narrow range with his check. Um fifteen and then fifty percent. He's checking his. Mediocre hands and I shouldn't say mediocre. Mid. Strength pocket pairs and. Whiffed flush draws right here. So let's see what happens. We do not bet. We just check behind. Um I guess because at the time we think that he could be checking and inducing a a bet with aces and kings right here. Or he's just planning on check calling no matter what. So. King, queen off. Wow. Never even had that in his range. He double barreled with king, queen off. Holy cow. Well, it makes sense, but he three bet with king, queen off as well. So. That's interesting. So we were off on our read here. So if he has king, queen off, he has ace, jack off suit probably in his three betting. Maybe not, but he has that. He could possibly also be. Three betting those as well. He might have just seen a good opportunity. We were stealing. So he's just three bet re-stealing right there. But yeah, he has a wider range, seven point six as opposed to the uh five point seven three that we first thought. Wow. Interesting. So that was a um successful, you know, calling the two different streets right there. Um but a unsuccessful hand reading exercise, but we learned a little bit. Let's see what we got here. Oh, good. I'm glad I didn't read this because here's the hand out of position double barrel bluff with three bet pre flop with king, queen off. After small blind three bet pre flop with king, queen off couldn't pull the triple barrel. Yep. That's right. He couldn't. Um and I have it red. Red just means he's a a reg, a a tight aggressive player. Actually, no, he shouldn't be red. He should be blue. Maybe he started off shadow might have started off as a knit. Red is my knit color. Um blue is my reg color. His stats are looking more reg right now. So we'll keep that coloring there. But the thing what you gotta do now of course is let's go to my notes. So what did we had? We had queen, queen. The opponent's range is what we did. This one was a failure. What a bummer. So we're eleven for sixteen now, which is not bad. Much rather be at a hundred percent, but whatever. So we'll go to the forum dot redchip poker dot com. So this is what the forum looks like over here. Um you can see all the different categories. Of the forums and then popular tags over here. Uh this is actually my first time posting in this forum. I check it out occasionally. I've never I think ever. I don't think I've ever even responded to one. But let's go ahead and start a new discussion right here. Discussion title. Over pair. Over pairs the tag right there. Now I do. I'm not sure which one to use. Let's copy this one. Let's see what it looks like when pasting. Okay, merge da 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 and converted. Big blind hero on the button da da da. Small blind pre flop action, queen, queen. Da da da. River twenty-two of clubs SP checks hero. Da da da. My question. Two questions. Great. Good morning. Played this three-way hand earlier. Uh. Played this three-way hand and just didn't know what to do on the river. Value bet or check behind? Um what else can I say about it? Four point three percent. Just making sure that everything looks good here. Hero raises seventy-five uh da da da. Two ta da. SP checks hero. No, no, no. Two question. What range does opponent bet? Bet. Bet, bet, check. What range does opponent bet, bet, check this river with? Does opponent take this bet, bet, bet? Line with? So when we talk about lines, it's uh looking at street by street, just the basic move you made, you know, check, check, bet. Check, check, raise, raise, whatever it is um or check, check, raise, bet. So what range does? Opponent take this bet, bet, check line with? Should I go for value? I have a feeling it could be bluffing here, but what if he's got aces or kings and is just enticing me to bet? Thanks for your opinions. Um let me see. Should I go for value on this river with my over pair queens? Three bit pot. Should I go for value on this river with my over pair queen, queen? Cool. Looks good. So this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna post this discussion right now. Um. Let's see. Once it posts. Is it working? Draft saved. Okay. New discussion. I'm logged in. Oh, select a category. Interesting. Um online poker hands. Da da da, da da da. Oh, no way. Can I do that? Oh rad. That makes it more fun. Oh. So you just put a colon in front of it. Wait, what's going on here? No. Get out of here. Colon, queen, die and a queen of hearts. Okay, two of hearts. Oh, nice. So seven of diamonds. Nine of hearts. Let's make this pretty. Three of spaderinos. So I just put a colon. Get out of here. Good. And I put a colon. Let's preview this puppy now. Nice. Okay. So much better. Here has queens flop comes do seven nine turn three. Just double check. Make sure that's totally accurate. Diamond heart dun 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 bam patin patin dun dun. We're good. Yeah, cool. What range does opponent take? Cool beans. Yep, my first post. Hooray. I'm in. Good morning. Played this three-way pot, yada, yada, yada. Details, lovely cards. Two questions. What range does opponent take his bet, bet, check line with? Should I go for value? I have a feeling it could be bluffing here, but what if he's got aces or kings? Sweet. Well, we'll see what happens. So for everybody watching right now, um we're gonna revisit this post tomorrow. We're gonna give it a full twenty-four hours. See what happens instead of coming back two hours for the second session to see what they say. Um. So we'll come back and visit it tomorrow. If you are watching this and would like to like to. Leave your own opinion. Great. Please do so. You've seen the full hand play out. Um so I mean that might color your opinion of this hand, but if you wanna leave a note for sure, good, do it. But um you know, one of the things that we're doing or one of the reasons we're doing this is because um you know, I just wanna show you. The kind of information that you can get by posting your hands in good forums and the red chip is a good forum. The kind of information that you can get by posting your hands in good forums and the red chip is a good forum. So there's that, we'll hit that in twenty four hours from now. Save that for later. Alrighty, so game tape time, here is the game tape that we'll be reviewing, um, I'll send this link out in the video. Click on it right now, um, so. One sec. Pause that before we get it going, um, yeah, so we're, as we're going through this, we're gonna look for any mistakes made in the game tape. And I'll look for action steps that I can take with me into my next uh play session, whatever those might be. Uh, let's see. I don't really wanna fullscreen it, do I? Yeah, I do, I can always just exit it quick and easy. Alright, so. Gotta check the volume on this puppy, make sure stream comes through, okay, got a hundred percent set. Alright, if you notice any uh audio issues, please let me know for those who, for the five of you in the, in the, on the stream right now. Appreciate you guys joining me, so let's go ahead and uh get to watching. Alrighty, so we've got uh some game tape right here. That we're gonna be recording just thirty minutes and uh with this game tape, the focus for this entire session is. Uh, putting myself in my opponent's shoes, so when I fold a hand, I'm going to be ranging my. The pre flop raisers, whoever that is, I'm gonna be arranging them the entire time, trying to get a good idea of what they have, I mean, it's just basically hand reading practice. Looking at the moves they make, the bet sizing they use and seeing, seeing if we can't figure out what they have as the play goes through the streets. And then, and then he ha- oh, look, wow, what is that? Only seven to, oh, so you just, you just hit the all in button, okay, so you have a straight or flush and you're hoping that, that he calls with a pair or something. But uh. Well, interesting, so we have a sitting out, if he loses his stack, he might sit out, might have to start this recording over again, uh, we'll see, but. Um, yeah, so just gonna be talking through decisions, making sure that we are making the best decisions possible. Might have a pretty aggressive player in position on us right here, uh, but we'll see, we'll just take it one hand at a time, see what's presented to us. Uh, play the course as Ed Miller says and uh. Eighty ninety eight offsuit and you know, just play the course as he says, so we shall see.
Yep, so that was my plan with this one.
Um, oh, great, just us in the small blind, we might even get a walk, uh, no walk, so this is what I always do. Um, let me go ahead and turn this off right here. So that is a hard. That's a really hard flop to hit, so I am definitely gonna open, I raised it pre flop after the limp, so we're repping a good hand right here by the raise, um. Uh, in this instance, but then he just called, so he obviously has, he obviously has a a king or flush draw himself. He's not gonna be giving up on this and I don't have any kind of backup at all, I'm just checking behind, um. Maybe if we hit a pair, which we didn't, but yeah, he's got a king right there, he's not giving up. Oh, queen seven, oh wow, called with a queen seven on the turn, what a, what a very passive call right there. Hit the queen guaranteed wasn't gonna give up, but um, yeah. Interesting.
It's like you saw that raise uh when it was limped to me in the big blind, when it's just me in the small blind, I'm always raising right there. Uh, in order to rep the ace or the king that hits and uh, sometimes you come across those players like Densky. Who uh, they're not gonna fold for anything, just queen high on the king five five board and they continue.
Not gonna steal with a four ten offsuit bottom five percent hand, maybe bottom ten percent or so, uh, just not gonna steal with that one right there. And uh, this video is just gonna be thirty minutes, at the end of thirty minutes, we're gonna call it quits because this is our game tape review on a Thursday. So we can see, we do have an aggressive player with position on us. Min three bet from ace AJC. And then, not min, but a smallish four bet, so. So far, we've gotta put you on some kind of a good value hand. All the pocket pairs, ace, king suited possibly, ace, king off, I don't think so, I think ace, king off would have just called right there. Ace, king suited possibly, um, tens are better, maybe even nines are better, but tens are better, quite possibly, especially if. I don't know anything about this player, only three uh, three hands on him, he might have a, a big sample on him. And he might know that he's capable of three bet bluffing, so he came in with a good.
Hello, everybody, uh, sorry for that interruption, just had a sudden core meltdown as they say on Star Trek. And I had to refire everything back up, but I think we should be good and running now. So uh, let's go and fire back up this video and we'll see if we can't find any mistakes I make.
A C bet and uh seeing that it didn't work. So I'm not gonna steal with a four ten offsuit bottom five percent hand, maybe bottom ten percent or so, uh, just not gonna steal with that one right there. And uh, this video is just gonna be thirty minutes, at the end of thirty minutes, we're gonna call it quits because this is our game tape review on a Thursday. So we can see, we do have an aggressive player with position on us. Min three bet from ace AJC. And then, not min, but a smallish four bet, so. So far, we've gotta put you on some kind of a good value hand. All the pocket pairs, ace, king suited possibly, ace, king off, I don't think so, I think ace, king off would have just called right there. Ace, king suited possibly, um, tens are better, maybe even nines are better, but tens are better, quite possibly, especially if. I don't know anything about this player, only three uh, three hands on him, he might have a, a big sample on him. And he might know that he's capable of three bet bluffing, so he came in with a good sized four bet bluff. Uh, possibly, so, don't know. Gotta walk, anytime a walk happens, I think to myself, dang it, I could have opened and just stolen that, but, oh well. Uh, so a raise right here versus a passive player, uh, I haven't seen a raise yet, ace jack offs not, wow, everyone folded. I'm surprised, I wanted to see a flop and see how they would react to the flop right there. But, oh well, um, maybe they all know too that a raise by Densky equals strength.
Yeah, so I'm good with that fold I just made right there. Uh, it was from the MP, I saw a lot of active players behind me, uh, some good three betters and stuff and I didn't wanna come in for a call. And I don't like ace, jack offsuit versus an EP open enough to, to raise to three bet.
Short stack passive one coming in for a raise. So it's a good pocket pair, couple of nice aces, pocket kings. Ace, king, six eighty a shove, yeah, so you like your hand, you've got an over pair on that flop, oh, only nines against a flop flush. Wow, okay, so Densky's capable of uh, taking a big stab, just a, really not so bright of a bluff right there. I'm not a fan of that bluff at all, let me tell you. And go get your knife, snapped him off? Which I'm down with, go get your knives play, um, yeah, I wanted to come in for a raise, but versus the. What is that, you have to type in two twenty six, why would you make it slightly bigger? One cent bigger than a, a standard three X three bet. Let's see what we can make of this, I'm gonna put him on a tight range right now, um, just want a big pot, could be on, you know. Positive tilt or winners tilt kind of a thing, then a half pot bet, takes it down, we'll never know what they had. But I would say that was probably a good hand.
Yeah, I try to pay attention to those uh odd bet sizings that people make.
And they check twice, that's a good time to bet, so I totally, I'm down with that bet that you made, go get your knife. So just doing a regular steal right here, playing the flop in position, now last time. Oh, you were the one that made the min raise, I'm gonna call right here to see, I mean, it's only fifty cents to try to win two sixty, so. Uh, I'm getting one to five on my money, I only twenty percent equity, I'm gonna call right here. And we'll see what happens, see if we flop something nice. And nothing at all. I'm just gonna check behind, don't have much of anything, now I got a pair, I can call a bet for sure. Get value from his bluffing range. No reason to be scared of the ten, I called when the king was already out there, I'm gonna call again, if you have a king, so be it. But I don't know why you would check that flop with a king, okay, ace, jack offsuit, min three bet.
Yep, I'm good with that one, I don't need to uh, he just, you know, on that king high board, he should have bet if he had a king just to try to get value out of me. No bet equals weak, so I called him with my second pair. And if I was good on the flop, good on the turn, maybe not on the river, but so be it, if he caught a, a miracle three outer for a better pair than me.
Min three bet re steal versus a button open with ace jack off. Ace, jack off. The big stack is sitting out, tag player, so that's okay, dynamite king is in, so this table is actually pretty lag infested. So I think I'm gonna tighten up pretty well, um. Three bet bluffs are definitely still profitable at a table like this, because they do open so wide, um, you know, they're not gonna come back fighting all that often, so. Uh, I would say that definitely, um. Three betting can still be valuable, but here, such an aggressive three better, another aggressive three better, another one. Um, I've got to be tightening up, because if I'm opening just far too wide, they're gonna come in and be able to push me around and uh take too many pots, especially. Cause they have position on me. So my intent was to stay at one, what looked like a decent table the whole time, but let me take a look here. I don't mind it, I'll jump in tables for one thing, my goal is, oh, this looks like a good four ring table possibly. Um, my goal is to make as much money as possible when I play, you know, I wanna learn and work on my skills as well, but when you're at a table full of lags, uh. It's just a more, it feels more variance laden, um, because they are three bent so much. I could do a lot of four bet re bluffing of them, but then that just, it's just really costly when you're doing a lot of bluffing like that, three, four, and five bet bluffing. So I've decided to uh possibly get to another table, put my name on a waitlist over here for uh, what looks like a good looking nine. Nine mat or four ring table. Fold it around.
Yeah, it's funny, so this is game tape and normally I don't talk through those kinds of things. Um, but I knew I was recording this to play on the video today, so I'm speaking through that kinda stuff, on my next game tape. Uh, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna work on not talking through that kinda stuff and just focusing on the action and the players at the table. Uh, which is, when I record game tape for myself and uh, if I know I'm not going to post it, that's what I do, I just speak through those, those decisions. Everything not related to the current table going on, I just, I don't talk about, but. I need just to work on that, uh, treating this game tape, even though I know I am posting it for you to watch, treating it like just the game tape, um. Uh, that I, that I always do for myself.
Ten deuce, I'm not gonna be doing a defending, let's see if we can't range somebody who opens. Bet stops is pretty aggressive. Good player, I believe. Can employ some good post flop aggression, only sixty cents. Three big blind open and call with queen ten off. But an open call, seven, six suited. Straight flush on the river, large value bet, hmm, okay. Well, we'll see what we know about bet stops, what do we have on dynamite king here? Capable of min raise bluff on turn after checked around on flop. And the player made a tiny two, so tiny raise equals bluff in a passive pot, or pathetic pot. Which I sometimes call it. Cause uh, it's a pathetically played pot, nobody wanted to uh, bet at it on the flop or the turn and so. Somebody finally makes a stab, you know, they take a little pathetic little stab at it on a later street after prior uh passivity. Looking at this lobby here.
Your hands like that eight four offsuit, they don't need to be raised, I mean, eight four offsuit is like a bottom ten percent hand, you don't need to be. Raising and trying to steal with that, so. Auto clicking fold on hands like that is just fine.
Know with, you know, with multiple waitlists or multiple names on a waitlist, it's often a juicy table, but it takes longer to get on it. Uh, this one looks like it might be good, okay, well, we'll see what happens. Hopefully some people leave and we get on tables. So two thirds pot bet on that prior one, on a queen four seven with a pretty quick call. Two thirds pot again with a quick call, okay, so that's a queen or a couple of hearts or a queen plus a couple of hearts, um. No draw got there, six eight, I guess, got there, but I gotta put AJ, AJC on a queen. And then pocket kings, I didn't see the full hand, but yeah, good hand, I understand the bending, the flop and the turn. Cause they called the flop, that doesn't mean they have an ace. So when the ace hit the turn, yeah, oh, another walk. Queen in a four, not gonna do it. Looking for some prettier hands. Like a queen and a queen or an ace and an ace, ah, woo pistol came in, man. Tough players. Tough aggressive players at this table, um, you can see I am the nittiest, only fifteen hands, I'm a thirteen thirteen player, but. Um, I would say, yeah, just in general, I'm definitely the, the nittiest at this table as well. Lot of quick folds.
And I think when you're at a table like this, full of lags, I mean, every single player is a lag except for dynamite king who's a tag, um. Uh, it's really a good idea to tighten up, you know, you don't wanna fight aggression with aggression, you wanna go the opposite direction of the rest of the table. So uh, just Dan, thanks for following, I appreciate it. Thank you, Justin, um, yeah, you wanna go the opposite way of the table, if everyone's nitty, get loose and start stealing a lot of pots. If everyone's really loose, get nitty and start value owning them.
These players, they look at their hand, they know what they're doing, they're just getting out of there. So that was a pretty wide under the gun range, but I'm not gonna three bet bluff nor call out of position like that with a crap queen. Doesn't feel like a winning spot for sure. So you fold eighty six percent of the time, you're big blind to a small blind raise, um, it's a small sample, but eighty six percent is what, six out of seven? Yeah, definitely gonna raise here, I have an ace blocker as well, my having an ace puts less aces in his range, he folds only twenty five percent. Um, yeah, I'm just gonna check here. Probably just check give up, I didn't hit much of anything, I have one over card. I would love to hit a free turn ace, but yeah, wasn't gonna do it, you bet just half pot. C bet twelve out of fifty seven percent of the time, in position, out of position thirty, so in position, you like to bluff. But I don't really wanna come over the top, I don't, I don't have enough equity, I mean, what am I gonna hit on the turn that I like, I don't even like a seven. That just gives me an open ender, you know, so. Let me take a look at the other table.
Yeah, sometimes, um.
Um, I have.
Sometimes making those checks like that, when you feel like you should C bet, it feels terrible, but when you flop just almost no equity. One over card with a crap kicker and a backdoor straight draw, it's really, you're better off. Just giving up in the long run, I'm trying to steal a pot from a loose aggressive guy out of position, um. Yeah, making that C bet, I could have just taken it down right there, but it just, if he would have called, what do I do on the turn, I don't like just about any turn card, so if. Oftentimes, if I'm gonna barrel, or if I'm gonna throw out that bluff C bet, I wanna have some good reasons to barrel. A good reason to barrel is when you are in position for one, cause it puts that maximum pressure. Another good reason to barrel is when you have a lot of equity outs or a lot of cards that can come to add equity. Whether they add some kind of a flush draw, a straight draw, or they add a pair or two pair to your hand. Whatever it is, when there's a lot of future cards that can come that help, that's great, go ahead and bet with the plan to double barrel. But if there's nothing that can come on the next street that can help and you have nothing right now, you're better off just check giving up. Um, in the, like I said, he's super aggressive, don't fight aggression with aggression.
Position on. Uh, Porsche has position on me, a pretty tight aggressive player right there. Yep, I'm not gonna get on that table. Let me leave it. Another table just opened up, so yeah, like I said, put my name on a few different waitlists. Let's look at this one, Wu has position, shameless move skills, lab the door. And who's this player sitting out, one thousand NA? Oh man, this is another tough table.
Yeah, so this table, a lot of, a lot of good players at it.
Land here, I'm just gonna stay on this table. Till something better pops up.
And that other table that popped up, yep, too many good players.
I don't need to jump from one bad table to another. Uh, even that table's no good, okay, another one.
Hoping something good happens soon, you've seen a.
How are we gonna play our big blind here?
Uh, you've seen, I've been dealt a lot of just no good cards, no good situations, um, so we'll see if something happens soon.
He has a decent enough hand to steal. Lot of players was, players would call that, um, fifty cents in order to win two seventeen, uh, so you need a little under twenty five percent equity. It's just, it's, it's not a winning play with a queen three off, I mean, what are you gonna do? Hit a queen, you're not happy, hit a three, you're not happy, hit a ace deuce four for gutter, you're not happy. Hit a set of threes or a set of queens, and by set, of course, I mean trips. So Wu, you should have, I know he doesn't fold a lot, but you open pre, you should have rep the ace, you should have C bet right there. Regardless of having it, unless you hit trip aces, yeah, slow down, give him one street to catch a pair of nines. Alright, well, because you slowed down, uh, I mean, you could have a nine that you decided to fire when you didn't have an ace, you know, ten-nine, ten-eight, ten-seven suited, jacked ten, or, uh, jack-nine. Queen nine suited, yeah, you have a few nines in your range as well, um. So I think you have, I think you have absolutely nothing though, you got king, queen, you just made a tiny turn stab because you whiffed the, with the flop. So I, I'm not gonna put Woo on a big hand, I think, right now, because he called on that nine, he can rep a nine, bet three dollars, three-quarter pot, and take that one down. Uh, ace-six, oh, I didn't think you had a hand as good as ace-six, I would have bet that flop right there. Unless he put him on a worse hand and just couldn't call with anything but an ace, then it's understandable. Uh, with the ace-five off, I'm not gonna defend, ace-five suited, uh, I like defending with ace-five suited, but ace-five offsuit, no thank you. Push the tempo, is sitting out. Yeah, in general, I, uh, really like suited hands, uh, they do give you a little bit extra equity, preflop, they give you some equity, um, like three or four percent, depending on the hand, depending on the situation, so. They're so much better to play, holy cow. Another meltdown. Hello? Yeah, you can still see me, the power just went out in the house.